About five seconds. I think we're safe. So seeing no one here for public comment, I would like to move on. We do not have a student advisory representative yet. They are still getting acclimated to the new school year. Ms. Miller, do you know if we will have one for the next meeting or not?
I hope so.
But not certain.
Okay.
All right. Perfect. Thank you. So I'd like to start with the superintendent's reports and recommendations.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening, everybody. Good evening, everybody. Welcome back to all of our students and faculty and staff that have returned for the 25-26 school year. Just three key points that I've noted to you. Number one, we continue to move on the class and action goals of the district. I'd like to share with you the future and what it looks like in terms of getting rid of 60% of our trash. This is one option, and I'll pass it around so you can take a look at it. In terms of utilizing and eliminating 60% of our trash, the process with this is utilizing a third-party company. We buy the trays. They are ours. And then from there, the trays are picked up and washed on a daily basis and returned. We have to order about 10,000 of these, so the idea is when they get lost and all of that, but there's always fresh ones available to us. This is one idea that we're continuously looking at. The others is, in terms of information, these are all reusable. Every single one of these. I could pass these around if you like as well, just so you can take a... The idea behind this is literally limit our trash. Currently, what we utilize is pretty significant. And as you know, the costs of trash collection are going up over the next three to five years by 100%. I'll rephrase that again. 100%. Pretty significant. And none of that has to do... Think about a teacher lunch where they're picking up a salad. This is reusable as well. The teacher would use it. We'd go through the idea of recycling. So you're throwing away the composting stuff. You're throwing away whatever. And this is actually put into a system. It's taken off-site, and again, reusable. This one is more of like that sandwich, salad, vegetable type of setup. And so we are going to be, at some point in the near future, utilizing one elementary school for the purposes of looking at how it's working or not working, and then from there. This is now being used in Needham, Mass. as a district. Norwood has moved forward from one school and continuously grown, and same thing with Walpole. It kind of lined up. It was a Channel 4 story, WBC story that I saw, and then I just followed the line, called the school systems, did all of that to try to say, okay, we need to do something. 60% of just trash from our lunches will no longer be in a bag, if you will. So now we had to look at all other items. The composting situation, the recycling, and everything that needs to be recycled. It's also an educational opportunity because we're teaching kids about recycling. The idea that you have to take your carton, and it goes in here, and so on and so forth. There are districts moving away from plastic knives and plastic forks to real... where... excuse me, dinnerware, if you will. The other part we have to look at is not... I can't present it to you, but looking at recyclable bins in every classroom, creating recyclable and environmental-friendly clubs at our elementary schools. I happen to have experience with this in my last district, where we had that blue bin that's for paper and everything else that can be recycled, and then you have the kids picking it up on Friday afternoon in a big bucket and, you know, so on and so forth. You can make it into a competition, too, if you'd like. So that's the second item that we're working on. And then the third item that we're working on is I'm in discussions with Paul Jaffoon from the Superintendent of Public Works around the idea that our trash would actually go as part of the public system and not as a third-party vendor. We currently pay over $86,000 for trash pickup alone.
Per...
And that can go beyond that total.
Per year.
Yeah. And that can go up depending on how many more calls you need to make because of X, Y, Z. So the Plan and Action Committee that I have before you tonight that I'd like to... I'm going to be appointing is myself. I have a talking to Ms. Miller, who has a ton on her plate, who was originally going to oversee this. I think there's a couple of other avenues that she could actually lead with, and I'm going to lead this one and put it into place. Director of Facilities, Director of Food Services, a secondary administrator to be named, an elementary principal to be named, three faculty members from Elementary, OMS, and SHS, two parents, Elementary, secondary, two students, secondary, and one community member. And of course, anytime if the volunteers don't come forward, then we'll fill it in with other folks that are interested. So this is just for your information real quick. Another climate action is we have received a $2,709,820 grant from the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center. I will be attending the kickoff meeting and presentation next week along with Dennis Regard, Director of Facilities, and Kathy Stanley, our energy consultant. By the way, she's a consultant district-wide in terms of the community. She does the town buildings as well as the schools. The Wilkins Elementary School received the $2.7 for their funds to install air source heat pumps, a heat pump, water heater, electrical service upgrades, and a building management system for the entire Wilkins. It's great stuff because that just gets us literally all of our buildings moving forward. As you know, we've been working at the DAR and the Gibbons this year as well. That was through Esser Funding. So all of these upgrades being done through some type of federal or state grants, and so we're really happy with that because, long-term, it just solidifies the buildings, especially once we get our capital improvement plan forwarded and done. We can check off the box, say we've already changed that. Our biggest question in the future will be boilers. And then lastly, I just want to articulate to the public, since it's come up, the security audit is done. I have it in hard copy. The executive summary will be coming to you in executive session in the near future so that you can see the general gist of what it looks like. But the article, thanks to town meeting, from 2024 is completed and updated and done, as well as some of the other articles that folks may be thinking about around issues such as cameras, door lock changes, doorknob changes, vestibules. Those are all completed, except for the cameras, which we will held a little bit simply because we wanted the security audit, of which the security audit is giving us areas that we really need to... Just want to answer all that to the record.
Thank you so much for that update. Any questions?
Yep.
Superintendent Karen?
The... You said that you wanted to move... There was consideration of moving the trash that we do per year, which we... It costs us $86,000 per year. And your thought is that if we reduce the amount of trash by using these new trays and plates, then we would be able to work with the town to have them remove our trash?
Potentially, yes.
Potentially. And hopefully, that would reduce... I would assume that would reduce this $86,000, which sounds like a great initiative.
Yes. Our biggest trash pickup that we have is from our lunchtime and our breakfast time. That's our biggest. And most of it is because of the trays. They're reusable trays, but basically, you know, they come from, if you will, a material that's put together from other stuff that you collect. But the fact is, they're used once, and then they're gone. And they go into trash bags. And then those trash...
They're not recycled.
They are not recycled. They come from recycling, but they are not recycled.
I see.
This would allow for us to do the recycle.
But the school does use recycling for, like, papers and other...
Yeah.
Not for lunchroom.
We need to do more.
Need to do more for the lunch... This is really just a lunchroom initiative.
It is. But we... You will also see an initiative classroom-wise, hall... All of that stuff.
Sure. Sure. And you said that these utensils, they won't be cleaned on-site. They'll be cleaned off-site.
Correct, because we do not have...
So we'll pay a company to do that.
Part of the deal.
Okay. And will you have a cost breakdown for us?
Yeah.
And when are you anticipating to start... You said you'd do like a first phase, maybe in one school, and see how it works?
Yeah.
Yeah. And when can we expect like a cost analysis on this?
Probably by... No later than October, because we're looking at a potential October start date.
Oh, that's early.
Also, none of the funding for this comes from operational. It all comes from the food services revolving account.
Thank you for that. And when you... When you talk to Mr. Guilfoyle from the town, there has been a push from some sources in the town to change the trash. Have you taken into consideration the fact that if the town does change its trash pickup to a private vendor, like Waste Management or something? Is this... How is it going to affect... Have you thought about that?
Yeah. So we have a couple of things, right? I don't really know... I believe that the number that's been used over the years, it's been used, is five years. Within the next five years, the town's going to have to make some decisions about the trash pickup because there just isn't a place to, quote, "go put it," if you will. So the question for us would be, how are we part of that? Do we take up with it? Are we able to take up with the town? So that's the first discussion. Second discussion, what does that cost? Third discussion, how long is that for? And the last part would be, if we're going privatization, then we would know that we would have to go back to privatization.
Right. That's what I was wondering. Okay. So that is part of the conversation.
Yeah, it has to be.
It's on... Right. All right. That's it for me.
Great questions. Thank you. Any other questions?
I have a question. Those trays are really heavy. Has there been any consideration on safety, especially when it comes to silverware, too?
Yeah. Excellent question. So I'm not at the silverware place yet. Let me start there first and foremost. I can assure you that in talking to my colleagues, there hasn't been any issues. It's just one of those things where there haven't been issues. Sometimes they get lost, but they're pretty strong. But I specifically asked that question around, is it too heavy, so on and so forth. There are situations with students who have physical issues that we already help with. So that's the... The reason why these trays are the way that they are is that they're made to be picked up and washed in a system that allows, instead of 180 school districts utilizing their, if you will, dishwashers, if you had them, of which we only have one that actually works in Stone right now, if I remember correctly, the high school. So you save on personnel, you save on water bill, electrical, and everything else. I'll get you the cost of... The cost analysis of it, but it does not come out of the operational. But no, we have not heard, seen, or been told differently about it.
That's my first thought as soon as I picked it up, was like, oh, this is...
Yeah. I have more... I have more questions about the real silverware and where that belongs and doesn't belong than I do about the trays.
Yeah, that was my thought.
So that could be left up to Julie to undertake.
So Joe, what is cheaper, the trays or the plastic? Because I can see the trays becoming a weapon. Sorry, maybe...
Yeah.
Many years in the middle school.
Yeah. They could. I mean, there's no doubt about that. I mean, we do have cherubs who like to throw food and all that other stuff in every public school system that I've worked in, but there are potential repercussions for that, you know, in terms of it becomes a weapon. I mean, if you take a cheeseburger that's been wrapped in tin foil and you make it into a hard ball and you decide to yap it at somebody, that's a weapon. So we would have to go through that process. We have a tendency to not do things because we worry about the 1% or 2%, and I take it from the perspective of the other 98%. And we will have to deal with it. There's no doubt. But that's not what I'm hearing. What I'm hearing is that kids are liking the idea of recycling, that they are wanting to recycle, and this just gives us an opportunity. And it could be that it's not in certain schools for the time being, you know, that we... Again, we're going to go slow because we want to really take a look at what are the hiccups before we make a full commitment. And we're allowed to do that in this process.
How much are the tin trays?
The tin trays run about five... Somewhere between $5 and $6 apiece.
And you said we would need 10,000?
If you have the entire district. So I would go less than that if I'm just looking at a school. So it's about 60,000 to 65,000 for an entire... One-time purchase for the entire district. It's, you know, not that. I don't have it in my head in terms of... But let's say we did a school with only 500 or 400 or 300 times that by six bucks, you can see the cost. Remember, you have to purchase more than one. You're basically tripling your numbers because, remember, when one tray is dirty, the new tray is being set up for the next day. And so you're constantly... They're constantly in and out. It's about... Don't quote me on this, but somewhere between 30 and 40 cents per wash, per item. So that becomes your, quote, "big bill," if you will, of which our food services has that capability.
What do you see about faith if it works out for a first sample?
I would say if it works out with the first sample, I would like to see how we can move it from... Let's just say we started with an elementary school, just to maybe even address some of the questions, Julian, you just asked, some of the questions I've asked. And then I would take a look at potentially a high school or another elementary school. I think we have to... I like going slow to figure out what the hiccups are.
Like once a year?
No. I would say you can... The districts that have been phasing in have been phasing in over no more than two years. It depends on the size of the district. One of the districts just went in. They literally started in January, and by June, every single school had it.
And you said that... Did anyone else have a question? You said that it would cost about $60,000 if we were going to do district-wide for all the metal trays, if that's what we want with all the metal trays. Would that come out of food services?
Correct. All...
And there is the... That's in the budget for $60,000.
There's a significant... You'll be getting a report, there's a significant amount of money in the food services account.
That's good news. All right. Thank you.
And remember, that account pays for all employees as well, all expenses related to food services.
So it's not zeroed out at the end of the year? We have actually...
It's a revolving account. We do have to keep it at, you know, at a lower number than it is right now, and so we're looking at some of the upgrades we need to make to our potential kitchens.
Like dishwashing?
Yeah. I would probably never recommend installing in some of our schools dishwashers for a number of different reasons.
Other districts have them.
Yeah. And the problem is, the moment you start to go outside of the kitchen, that is now an operational cost. So think about water connections, think about electrical, all of that stuff. And more staff. You would have to hire more staff because you need somebody in that area.
Need a social...
That leads to one of the questions that I had. Will the committee be considering the opportunity caused from environmental or sustainable?
Yeah. And that's one of the things that we are going to be working with, all of the different energy organizations within the Commonwealth. This is a huge push. This is coming. It's just a matter of where do you want to be in the process? Do you want to be at the top of the line, the middle of the line, or the end of the line? But it's coming. And it's coming because there's a real concern around the amount of trash for 180 days of school and how much trash that really is. On average, it's just above 60% savings in the amount of trash that's collected in a school, a individual school. Now, how many bags depends on the size of the school. Most of the stuff that goes into the bag are these foam slash cardboard-like, non-reusable trays with all the food and everything else that goes in there. So there's no, like, composting. Because that's going to be a secondary issue, is like the composting, what is the cost of that, and so on. That has to be part of it as well.
That's a big one also. So I have a question on the other thing you talked about, if we're done with the trays, about the Clean Energy Center.
If I can just ask one more question first?
Yeah, no.
Okay, thank you. Are you looking for a school committee representative on that committee?
I'm happy to add a school committee representative to this. Many of these meetings are going to be virtual, so... Or hybrid, so I'm happy to anybody who thinks they'll have the time. Some of these meetings will have to probably be directly after school hours, so just keep that in mind.
All right. So if a school committee member wants to volunteer for this, but it doesn't require school committee representation?
Correct.
Okay. Perfect. Thank you. Karen?
All right. So then, if we're done with that, just... I think it's just you need to kind of jog my memory because you said the... This is awesome, by the way. This $2.7 million grant to do the Wilkins is fabulous. Saves us an awful lot of money. And that's great for the Wilkins. You mentioned also the Gibbons and the DAR. Can you just remind me what we're doing at the Gibbons and what we're doing at the DAR and what the Esser Funds had to do with that? Because that was... I mean, Esser is over, but I know that we've got some money left over.
Yep.
And the federal government maybe isn't giving it, but the Massachusetts government said that they're going... I'm going to let you kind of...
So two parts. The first one is the Esser Funds were done by prior administrations for the purposes of using those funds to upgrade HVAC systems at both the DAR and the Gibbons School. Those two schools were tackled because they're in excellent condition. Right off the bat, air conditioning, better airflow for our kids in the summer program at the DAR School, the Gibbons School, et cetera. The Gibbons School was done this year. There was that funding was available, funding was taken out. The Commonwealth is suing and has, in writing, told us to continue the projects, so that's what we've done. And that project is now done as well.
The Gibbons Project?
That's the Gibbons Project.
Okay.
So this building will be your third building at $2.7 million from a state grant. So looking at this organization, the Massachusetts Clean Energy Center, they provided these... The 52.5 million dollar grants to a number of schools, ranging in a small three-figure amount all the way up to, I believe, a couple of them are $5 million. What we did in Stoughton is utilizing our energy consultant, Kathy Stanley. We took a look at all of our buildings being upgraded, excluding the Jones and the South because we already have plans for them. However, the... Everything within the next 20 years, 20-year process, we will be utilizing a company called Train, T-R-A-N-E. That company won the bid. They won the $2.7 million bid that we put out. In that bid win, what that means is we have one company working at the Wilkins, the DAR, and the Gibbons with anything to do with HVAC systems. We don't have to go out for a bid every three years. We don't have to do any of that. Second part, during the 20 years, any of the schools that need a further HVAC upgrade, you can go out for a... You don't have to even go out for a bid. You can use the current company that you're working with. However, we just are going after another state grant where we think we have a very good chance of getting, excluding the Jones and the South, all of our buildings further upgraded with less of an issue at the high school. In other words, probably not anything, but that doesn't mean that the grant will allow us. Some upgrades at the... At OMS, which has some significant issues. And then the Hanson would be our, quote, "last bucket." And if that grant comes through, then the only things that we really have to worry about over the next few years, and you're going to see this in the capital needs plan, is boilers. That'll be our big headed to deal with. In terms of the heating systems, you know, in the rooms, the airflow, the number of air quality and all of that stuff, you should see... This stuff is all controlled literally on a tablet. Literally. It's... Dennis from Home will be... And not only that, the company we chose, they just bought an AI company. And the reason is, AI is controlling everything to do with the classroom. So when AI sees that the classroom, Room 201 at the Blas School, all of a sudden has lost some heat, AI takes the system and just says, nope, we got to put heat in there. You don't even have to... Now, Dennis will get a message, but it'll no longer be somebody on the other side of it. It's literally working through artificial intelligence. And that's the future, as you all know. And these systems are upgrading themselves on a regular basis already. So we went with a company that was also very aggressive in that process.
So when you say HVAC, you weren't talking about this... I understand HVAC to be heating, ventilation, air conditioning.
Right.
So when we're talking about the HVAC at the DAR and the Gibbons, we're not talking about the boilers, the heating. These are all just for air conditioning?
Yeah. So it's air conditioning and airflow.
And airflow?
Yeah.
Okay. I didn't know that.
So when you're looking at heating, you need a boiler. So if you move to heat pumps, like we're doing at the Wilkins, then your issue is that a certain percentage of your heat that's coming in is not coming from a boiler, it's coming from heat pumps. So your new elementary school project has a number of heat pumps. It won't heat the entire building because the industry isn't there yet, but the fact is, that's where the industry's going, is that heat pumps will be literally heating most of our buildings over the next 20 years.
Okay. So the Gibbons... So the Gibbons HVAC is done, and that's basically air conditioning and airflow. We still have the DAR that needs... The DAR is also done. Both Gibbons and DAR are done, and they were done through Esser Funds.
Federal Funds.
Okay. And then we're still looking at boilers at which schools?
All of our boilers in our district are going to have... Are probably going to be on the capital plan, except for the high school. Definitely OMS, definitely the Hanson, definitely... I mean, the DAR, we actually purchased, if you remember, last year. We purchased the rather new boiler from the old fire station. It was seven years old. But an installation is still going to cost you between $100 and $150,000.
So that boiler is going in the DAR?
Potentially, yes.
Thank you for reminding me of all of this.
Any other questions for Dr. Baita? And I don't want to let the message get lost about the update for... Around the security audit. And Dr. Baita, I want to thank you for being so on top of that and moving that forward and keeping us informed in light of the recent tragedies and shootings. It's a stark reminder that we need to be proactive around security, so thank you for that update. Moving on to school committee reports and recommendations, I'd like to start with the superintendent evaluation. I would like to remind the folks at home that we do have a policy that covers the evaluation of the superintendent. It is the School Committee Policy CBI. And in through this evaluation of the superintendent, the school committee strives to accomplish the following: ensure that the efforts of the superintendent are focused on district goals; ensure that all committee members and superintendent are in agreement and clear on the role of the superintendent; provide excellence in administrative leadership of the school district; and develop a respectful and productive working relationship between the school committee and the superintendent. Reviewing the superintendent's performance is one of the key activities of the school committee. And with that, I would like to let you know that the members that actively participated in the evaluation of the superintendent included the past chair and vice chair, so Catherine Royce and Lindsay Greckler, as well as all five current school committee members. So what I'd like to do is just read through each standard and provide one highlight of what the collective said in terms of where Dr. Baita really excels, and then I would like to highlight a growth opportunity for each, and then the rating. So the first standard centers around instructional leadership, and the definition of this means the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students and the success of all staff by cultivating a shared vision that makes powerful teaching and learning the central focus of schooling. So I would like to highlight that the committee members said that Dr. Baita's work over the past few years have centered on laying the foundation for long-term literacy success, beginning with a comprehensive review and revision of elementary English language arts programming, including establishing instructional non-negotiables, that word was used many times, updating the district's literacy vision and core values, and implementing data-informed tools such as STAR 360, Edgy Climber, and regular screening protocols. For a growth area, I'd like to highlight while these structural changes represent meaningful progress, the school committee would like to see continued attention to ensure that instructional consistency across classrooms, differentiated instruction, and aligned assessments. Also, strengthening the public communication of district-wide academic goals and progress metrics to help build trust and transparency and support families and stakeholders. So that is something that you'll hear again later when we talk about community engagement. So the second standard is management and operations. The definition for this is the education leader promotes the learning and growth of all students of my, oh my God, did I do the, put the same thing twice? I did not. Of all students and the success of all staff by ensuring a safe, efficient, and effective learning environment using resources to implement appropriate curriculum staffing and scheduling. So there were many positive highlights here. One that I'd like to say is a major achievement of Dr. Baita was his collaboration with local police and fire departments to establish consistent district-wide standard operating procedures for emergencies, including lockdowns, fire drills, and medical responses. We also wanted to note that he expanded access to student and family mental health services through a partnership with CareSalus, providing 24/7 support for our families at no cost, and strategically used Esser funds to maintain behavioral health staffing and services. So wanted to highlight that. Looking ahead, a growth area is just continued attention on clarifying administrative roles in expanding tier two and tier three interventions for high-need students would be critical. This, these next steps will help ensure long-term sustainability and strengthen the district's capacity to support the whole child. The next standard, so much of me talking, okay. Next standard is family and community engagement. The definition for this is the education, the education leader promotes learning growth for all students, all staff through effective partnerships with families, community organizations, and other stakeholders that support the mission of the district and its schools. The school committee members all agreed that initiatives like the PTO leaders' meetings, the budget workshops, and the inclusion of family members in subcommittees and working groups have expanded opportunities for families to participate in the decision-making processes. These efforts have been especially visible in high-impact areas, including budget planning and the development of the district-wide literacy vision. For a growth area, I'd like to note that feedback from the district self-assessment highlights the need for deeper and more consistent engagement with families and non-family members of our community, particularly regarding the communication interpretation of student performance data. And then finally, sorry, and I should have been saying the rating, the ratings for all of these were proficient. I forgot to mention that. I'll go back and review that again. Standard for professional culture, this is where the education leader promotes learning and growth for all students, all staff by nurturing and sustaining a district-wide culture of reflective practice, high expectations, and continuous learning for staff. Here we wanted to highlight that Dr. Baita has achieved this by aligning professional development offerings with district priorities, introducing flexible learning opportunities through Launchpad, invest in instructional leadership development through initiatives such as coaching institutes, data-wise training, and expanded instructional coaching. His work has also supported the establishment of instructional, once again, non-negotiables, ensuring clarity and consistency in expectations across buildings, subjects, and grade levels. And for growth area, we'd like to note that moving forward, areas of continued growth include ensuring professional learning opportunities are not only consistent but high in quality and depth, and that the peer modeling and mentoring systems while in place could benefit from further development to support meaningful practice sharing and instructional growth. So for each in area, each standard, sorry, instructional leadership, the school committee rated Dr. Baita as proficient. For management and operations, the school committee rated Dr. Baita as proficient. For family and community engagement, the school committee rated Dr. Baita as proficient. And for professional culture, the school committee rated Dr. Baita as proficient. His overall rating is proficient. So I am stopping there and would like to ask if any of my school committee colleagues would like to include any comments regarding Dr. Baita's evaluation or performance?
Yes. So, you know, in writing this, a lot of my thoughts, Dr. Baita, is one, I want to recognize the awkwardness of having a public review.
Seventeen years.
Never in my, never in my years have I ever had to give a review in a public place, so I respect you for being able to handle that. When I was writing this, a lot of thoughts I had were your support when it came to the, the building of the new elementary school and the community. There's, actually, the first time I really had any interactions with you was, was when you came out to the community and spoke to everyone who would listen about the new school project, even people who didn't want to listen, you, you spoke with them. So absolute respect to the community, great education. So I just want to say that that part wasn't there, and I just want to say that I really appreciate that and respect that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Gillian. Other comments? Yeah?
Just the word, I think when I met Dr. Baita first, not sure about this guy, I just saw him excel, and though he's been very proficient, I'd have to say he's well above proficiency. He's exemplary, in my opinion, and he's took off, especially being in front of an audience and trying to communicate issues that the schools have, and being able to really get it across and help us get the new school and so on. I think he, he just sets the, he's a perfect example for a community fellow, and his ability to really communicate and get along with people and smooth things up, just outstanding, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Jen?
Dr. Baita, one of the things I've noticed and I've heard from people is how you make yourself visible around town. As a teacher myself, I know students who wouldn't even know who the superintendent was, and that's not for peace in Stoughton.
The kids know who you are. You show up, I mean, you showed up on Saturday mornings with the school, holding signs in the center of town. I mean, so you definitely stand behind what the school stands for, and yeah, I think we could even go exemplary for a lot of these, over proficient.
Thank you.
So you want to hear mine?
Go ahead.
I remember a time before COVID when things were push and pull with school committees and with superintendents and with families. And then I remember a COVID time when things were really difficult between superintendents and school committees. I remember numerous superintendents coming and going and lack of stability inside the schools. I remember someone very special coming up and asking you if you would mind coming here and help stabilize a school that was unstable for years and was having a real crisis after COVID. And I appreciate you coming in. I appreciate you stabilizing our district. I appreciate the effort and everything that you've done for us, and you're gonna be missed. You really are gonna be missed.
Not going in.
But you've gone, you know, but you did a lot in a very short amount of time. And whether people love you or people hate you, what you did was you stabilized this district, and we all owe our gratitude to you for that because you didn't have to come here. You were comfortable and you were set, and so we appreciate you getting up out of a very comfortable situation in a very lovely district that I'm sure was difficult to come here and stabilize us, and so I thank you for that.
And I would like to add to that, Dr. Baita, and I know that you so love public praise, that I, I really appreciate, on top of what everybody else has said, is not just that visibility, but that real drive to reach across the aisle to the town, to people who were not directly engaged by the school other than maybe through town meeting and making sure that everything was communicated. You, you walk the talk, you model transparency, you model respect, and, and that has really bled through into the culture of the schools. We've experienced growth, I would say, in all areas of the evaluation, and you have been able to do that while navigating extremely budget fiscal challenges without undermining the integrity of the instruction, the supports that we provide the students of Stoughton, and I do believe that needs to be recognized.
Well, thank you. So, you know, being publicly evaluated has, has so many downfalls, and for a number of different reasons. Number one, I'm not a big person to be praised publicly, and as you all know, I have a big ego as it is, but the idea of thank you, thank you, thank you is very much appreciated, but it's not something I like. I also don't like the other part, but I like the balance. But your words are very kind. I appreciate that, that a key thing for me and the thing that I suggested I could do, and maybe I've done it maybe a little less than some of you think, but just to stabilize the community that I live in and the community that I appreciate, and a community that's given me a lot, really was probably goal number one. And I think we've done some of that. I still think that list is pretty long. Stoughton is different. It's great, but it's different, and different doesn't mean less. It just means that we sometimes do things that I just wonder, why do we do it that way, right? Because we could be, do it differently and better, and that's the goal, I think, that I'm hoping to hand off to Julie, who has a history here and knows the players and can really take it to the next level. The last part is, I really appreciate and hope the committee continues to do what this current chair has done for someone who's coming in with less experience, which is to pat them on the back for doing what's good and give them an opportunity to grow in another area. And that, that management style, Chris, from you and the committee, truly will allow for you to keep someone in this seat for a long time. The, the, the most difficult part of, of, of a school system is turnover in management and leadership. If you're changing over all the time, you're, you're gonna have problems, and I think we had some of that. So the idea of evaluating somebody publicly through, you do this well, we appreciate you for this, and here's a growth area, if you can keep that standard, you will continue to grow as a district, in my opinion. And I thank you very much for both the positives as well as the, the growth areas, and those growth areas are already written down on a separate piece of paper for me to start to tackle for the remaining months that I, that I have with you. And of course, we'll do, we'll do the same with Julie. Thank you so much.
Thank you. With that being said, can I have a motion to approve the 2023-2024 superintendent evaluation?
So moved.
All right, that was made by Jen Sears. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Gillian. Motion's been moved and seconded. Any questions or debate? Hearing none. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Motion carries, 5-0. Congratulations, you've officially been evaluated.
Thank you.
Going into the next part of the agenda, communications. I've received two communications, and I believe at least one was received by all school committee members. So the first one was a question around the security enhancement update, asking specifically about the February 2024 town warrant, where the school asked for, I believe, $20,000 to support a security audit of the schools, and that was addressed in the superintendent's update. The other was a question asking for clarification on the kindergarten start, start date, why it was on the 8th when the rest of the district was starting on the 3rd. Dr. Baita, I don't know if you want to give a one-sentence summary of that for anyone who was curious about that?
Yeah, in general, the leadership team came together, and then with your support of the calendar, really wanted to take a look at a start date that would allow for us to have more information about our kindergarten students, do a little bit more screening with our kindergarten students. We are really right now trying to address the issue of making sure that our classrooms are as equitable as possible, so that we have classrooms that are distributed in a way that allows for us to do more with kids. And then lastly, we provided a very thorough full-day professional development for our kindergarten staff, which the preschool teachers had done, and we just felt that the connection of pre-K to K needs to be an area of growth. And so we thought that as the kids were coming into kindergarten from, not all of them, but some of them from the preschool, that it would be a, a really good thing to, to implement the conscious discipline protocols. So that's my, my rationale.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
I have a question on that.
Yes.
I didn't get that notice of security enhancement update. Was that in with the rest of the, you said that there was communication sent to all of the school committee members?
No, not of that one. I said of the kindergarten one, I believe, was sent to everybody.
All right, and usually when it's sent to everybody, what you have been doing in the past was making a copy and then giving it out in all the documents.
Yeah, I'm not sure why it wasn't included in this packet, but I'm happy to forward the email to everybody.
Well, if you can include those in the packets from going forward, that would be helpful since that's been done in the past. And then you said there was another communication of security enhancement update?
That's the same one you just asked about.
Well, you, I thought you were talking about the kindergarten one.
No, the kindergarten one everyone received.
Okay, but it wasn't printed out and put in the packet?
Correct.
And the security enhancement update, that is what Dr. Baita already spoke of, that wasn't an email that was sent out to the school committee members?
It was in response to an email that was sent out, yes.
Okay, and that's the email that we didn't get in our packets also? And that's not, and is there a reason why that one didn't go in our packets?
I, I am not sure.
I've already done. I'll get back to you on why. I believe that the, the, I received a email, I believe it was from Chris. Typically, what we try to do is copy all of those emails, just go to the chair. If I get them from somebody, I send them to you guys. Sometimes I don't put them in the agenda because I send them to you. It's not an agenda item, I just send it to you as a response. I believe I did that with the kindergarten one as well to the, to the person.
I'm just wondering why some...
I think, I think it's a clerical issue. I think it's a clerical issue. I'll address it tomorrow morning when I meet.
I'm really wondering why some emails are printed out and added to the documents and some are not. That's, you're saying that this was a clerical issue?
I believe it was a clerical, but I will work on it tomorrow to address it.
Okay, so moving forward, all communications will be printed out and included in our documents?
Yeah, if the, if there's a communication that comes from a citizen, a parent, a staff member, that is going to one school committee member, then it'll be shared with all school committee members, unless it has people's names on it, and then I try to...
Right, but then print it out and include it in our documents when we talk about it?
Into correspondence, yep.
Okay, thank you very much for that. I couldn't understand why some were and some weren't.
Yeah, that's perfectly understandable. Next up, we have an elementary school building update. I'd like to turn it over to Gillian and Julie Miller.
All right, so the South Elementary School building project is moving forward on schedule. There's a lot of coordination, strong coordination between the town, the MSBA, the project team and the community. Over the past several months, progress has been made in refining the design, so the outer design is, is being tweaked and the inner designs are being updated with like more detail. The, there's also been additional securing site access through Fano Drive and identifying cost-saving opportunities through the design and some sustainability rebates. The MSBA is actively reviewing the new design of the school that with the Fano Drive added into it, and also the other inner updates that were made. The changes for Fano Drive are going to be voted on in the October 27th town meeting. The town's finance committee also met last week to review all the borrowing options. The main goal is so that the, ensure the project is fiscally responsible and also environmentally sustainable while keeping on track that we're meeting our budget and getting this done on time. Some of the cost control measures that have been implemented has been a simplified roof design with skylights instead of slope roofs, a structural switch from timber to steel in the cafeteria for better sightlines, reduction of bay windows in the classrooms to reduce costs, and the cafeteria stage and learning stairwells are being redesigned for accessibility. The cafeteria, cafeteria stage is updated to accommodate 250 students for chorus and AV systems. New security features are currently under review with the principles for lighting, door controls, emergency beacons, outdoor play structures, and outdoor Wi-Fi, integrated site planning, and we're coordinating with Mast dot to begin for Park Street traffic improvements.
So a land swap deal has been agreed upon by the town and the family that owns...
Your mic?
Oh, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen.
A land swap deal has been agreed upon by the town and the family that owns the Fano Drive and the adjacent properties. Both property, both parties have signed an MOU contingent on a fall town meeting vote on October 27th, a special town meeting. That will be, that will allow the town to develop Fano Drive as an access point for the new school. That land swap alters the site design in really positive ways, and it will reduce the total cost of the project by about $2 million. It reduces the wetland impact and added impervious surface, which brings the project below the Massachusetts Environmental Policy Act MEPA threshold, so the project will no longer require a MEPA permitting review, which is gonna avoid a costly six-to-eight months state permitting process. Traffic will no longer be cutting through neighborhoods to get to and from the school site. There are no longer any bridges required for the site access, which saves in construction time and costs, and emergency access will be from the south end of Fano at the, at the Sumner intersection rather than Haynes Road, and appraisals for the parcels are underway. The school building committee also voted to proceed with a construction manager at risk, CM, rather than a designed bid, bid build. Ultimately, the CM was more beneficial to this project. The CM is a project delivery method where the town hires a construction manager at risk early in the design phase, and the CM works alongside the architect and the owner early on in the process so that they can provide input on costs, scheduling, and constructibility. The CM provides a guaranteed maximum price, a GMP, essentially a cap on construction costs. The G, the CM is then at risk to deliver the project within the budget and schedule, so if the project goes over the GMP, the C, CM absorbs the additional... So if the project goes over the GMP, the C, CM absorbs the additional costs, not the town. The benefits to that are obviously cost control, schedule efficiency, and reduce risk to the town. The school building committee also voted for the CM over the traditional design bid build because the project is really complex with the site and the environmental challenges. It will benefit from early coordination on constructibility and phasing and ensures stronger budget control, especially in this volatile construction market right now. The three construction firms, there are three construction firms that were shortlisted for consideration. They were Consigly, Gilbane, and WT Rich, each of whom came in for presentations to a selection subcommittee. That was on August 13th. Presentations lasted for about 40 minutes with time for questions and answers. And the selection committee, subcommittee recommended WT Rich, the school building committee, who then successfully voted to move forward with negotiations with WT Rich. And the negotiations are ongoing but nearly complete.
Additionally, that the, we're also applying for rebates and incentives, mass save rebates that could save the town to six figures expected. Additionally, we're looking into other rebates with the Federal Inflation Reduction Act. We have a LED certification, which is required by the MSBA, so that we have energy-efficient HVACs, water efficiency, sustainable site designs. We're selecting materials using recycled or low-impact materials and indoor environment quality like air quality, daylight, acoustics, all those things reduce the cost of, everything's more electronically and energy efficient. We also have the sites program, just making the site very sustainable, you know, parking, the site accessways, making sure the soil and vegetation preserve is preserved, stormwater management, outdoor learning play spaces, creating shaded accessibility, spaces for education and recreation, and having human health and well-being encouraged for outdoor activities. So these are our rebates that we get for having these types of places on the, at the school. The finance committee, the town met with the finance committee to review the borrowing options for municipal bonds. There was three scenarios given to the finance committee. One, a 20-year at 4%, a 25-year at 4.25% interest, and a 30-year term at 4.5% interest. After evaluating interest rates and the total cost for payment, the finance committee recommended proceeding with a 20-year bond for the initial borrowing as it provides the most favorable balance of affordability and long-term fiscal responsibilities.
Any other updates to present? That was a lot.
Yeah, we did a lot.
No, 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 it was great. A lot has happened.
Yeah, it's been like four months since it started and there's been a lot going on.
No, I really appreciate it.
Any questions?
Dr. Baieda?
Yeah, a couple of comments since this relates to the South School. To be very clear, the South Elementary School is open for business. That was part of the plan, that we would be building a new school and it would take three years. So that's part one, because there's some folks out there making commentary about that that is just not factual. Two, we never said we were closing the South School for the purposes of September of '25. What we said was if the if the the vote didn't go through, that we would begin the process of looking at modular classrooms installed at other schools for opening in 20, probably '27 because of the process. Just want to be very clear about that, because some folks are suggesting otherwise. The building is open, it would have to remain open, but there was two plans. Plan A, the best plan, open a new school in '28. Plan B, close the school and move all the kids into modular classrooms. People have to understand that when you pick up 300 kids, you just don't move them. You know, you don't, you know, you've got to go through a process. That's why both of the plans required redistricting. The plan we have now still requires redistricting because we're going to be closing the South, the South School and and coming down to four elementary schools. So I just want to enter that into the record to see if we can calm some of the misinformation that's out there.
I appreciate that, Dr. Baieda. I did have a question for the two of you. In light of the the recent volatile tariffs that are that are in play, and then of course the supply chain issues that happened over COVID, have there been any discussions about contingency planning to ensure that we cost what we need for the project but keep the costs down?
Yeah, absolutely. So the construction manager at risk, that's one of the benefits of going with a CM, because they can start to put out those packages now and start to secure the the materials that they'll need ahead of time. So they can beat the tariffs, beat any, you know, long delivery times and those those kinds of things. So that's why it's a real benefit. WT Rich is also aware of that. If I recall correctly, they did make some mention of that in their presentation as well, so that's something that they're planning for.
Great, thank you.
You're welcome.
And remind me, who was the firm, the contractor we went with for the high school project? Was it the same contractor or a different one?
It was a different one. It was Consigly for the high school.
Okay, that's what I thought. Okay. All right, any other, any questions? Yes, Karen?
Yeah. Right now, there's a select board meeting going on that's talking about the 20-year, 25-year, and the, and I'm looking at you only because you, you mentioned it in your thing. That's the only reason I'm I'm looking at you. But the select board right now, so there was a meeting with Tom Coulter and a group of Stoughton residents, a small group, and he put this out to them. And the vast majority of some very fiscally conservative folks wanted the 20-year because it saves, I don't know if you knew the savings or if you understood it.
Yeah, so between the 20-year and the 30-year.
And the 30.
It was, was 124 million versus a 96 million. So it it would have saved, you know, significantly.
I think if I remember right, from what he said, I believe he said it would save about $24 million. The problem with going from a 20-year to a 30-year for some of our residents who did not want this school to go through, I think we all know, is that it's going to cost them more. It's going to cost the residents more money. And I think that we would be remiss in at least not acknowledging that that was part of the issue from the beginning. That's not on us. We're a school committee. That's not our thing. But I do think we'd be remiss in saying that this is going to add significant cost to some people who can't absorb it and which was the biggest cry on the no people. So I know that there are some options out there to ease that gap. And and I'm not here to really talk about that so much as to say that there are some fiscal ways to be able to mitigate that for the taxpayers. And to say, well, maybe we can use some money from here or some money from there. We don't have to necessarily put it all on there. We can try to mitigate some of that for, and then again, that's not us, that's the select board. They're going to have to decide whether they want to do that or not. But I think that it's something that we needed to discuss in here and just acknowledge that there are people out there who are our constituents who actually are going to have a hard time with this going from the 30-year back, because it was, I believe in the first no vote, it was a 30, it was a 20-year. And so then they said, okay, well, maybe we can make it a 30-year, extend it out a little bit more. Like any loan, it's going to cost us more in the long run, but in the short run, it'll be a little less money for some people to go about that. So I wanted to make sure that at least I mentioned it to say that we understand that and we know that that's part of it. It's just not a school committee thing. It's a select board thing. But Joe, you did mention that some people were giving misinformation about modulators. And if you could just kind of say that again, because I'm not sure that I understood exactly. Oh, yeah, yeah, I'm sorry.
I just wanted to respond.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, I was looking your way, but I wasn't like saying this was your.
No, I did make a comment just because that was brought up quite extensively at the the ThingCom meeting. So the difference between the 30-year loan and the 20-year loan, it was $25 per month for the 30-year loan, it was $28 per month for the 20-year loan. But the 30-year is obviously going to be paying that 25 for much longer, you know, 10 years longer than the the 20-year. So I I completely respect that that is, for some people, like that's a lot of money to have to take out of their pocket, because it doesn't come out usually like $28 per month. It comes out the end of the year and they have to pay that at once. So I do respect that a lot, but I just want to make sure it's clear that that's the exact terms of the of the bond. And something I did want to also bring up is something I really didn't know as just a layman when it comes to municipal financing was municipal bonds are, it's a contract to pay at the same rate for that period. It's not like a mortgage where you can say, well, I'm going to pay more now so I don't have to pay later. You can't pay off a loan early. That's just how municipal financing works. So I thought that was an interesting fact that I learned the other night.
Jen?
I also attended the finance meeting the other night, and I just wanted to know that the vote was unanimous. Everybody voted to go with the 20. So even the conservative members, and you might say the non-conservative members, everybody saw the financial, you know, way of going to 20. And I know it's going to go to town meeting and that they'll make the final decision.
Select board makes the decision.
Select board, okay, so select board. But the finance committee did vote unanimously to go to 20 years.
Yeah, yeah, it's just a, it's a hardship for a lot of people who didn't, it's not that, I don't think people didn't want a new school for children. I think they just said, we're starving here and we just can't do it anymore. We can't do anymore.
And Jillian, just if I hear you.
Kind of goes back to that again.
If I, if I hear you correctly, it sounds like what you're stating terms of the terms of the bond is that for the 20-year bond, we're not paying more, people are not paying more, they're just paying more upfront, but over the long run, won't be paying for as long. So they're actually not paying as much.
Yes, the 20-year loan is more fiscally conservative. Exactly. Just like if you would think of any mortgage or, I mean, it's hard to compare the two, but if you compare in layman's terms, a mortgage, you know, if you get a 20-year mortgage, you're paying a lot more each month, but your overall cost goes down because of interest. Interest is the real killer. And also, it was mentioned that we can refinance that bond if interest rates go down. So there is an opportunity that we don't pay as much as what is being stated now. We just can only say what facts are today, and this is what the interest rates are today.
And if the feds bring the interest rates down, that could impact this.
Yes, absolutely. And additionally, so there's going to be two sets of bonds that we're going to do. This is just the first initial set. And then we're going to reevaluate because the building committee and the engineers, they're doing a lot to reduce the cost right now so we don't have to borrow later on. So there's the borrowing cost, that's the, that's the hardest thing. And then once, if we're able to reduce our costs now, we won't need to borrow as much.
Perfect, thank you for that. Karen, you had another question?
I did.
Well, Dr. Baieda needs me to reiterate it?
No, I just, so there were some comments that were being made around the idea that people were duped into voting for a new school, and yet the new school, the old school is still open. My clarity is simply the the purpose of the two-part plan that we had for the South School was that long-term, we're not going to be putting money into that school because you're throwing the money away. So therefore, you have two plans. Plan A, build a new school. Plan B, opened in '28. Plan B, begin the concept of redistricting and moving modular classrooms to, if I remember correctly, the Daw, the Gibbons, and the Hanson, and potentially the Wilkins, to move the 300 students that are at the South. And that would be done with an opening of, or a changing of '27. So it's always been either a two-year or a three-year that the South School would have to remain open.
So what you're saying is some people thought that it was like fear mongering? Like, oh, you're going, we're going to have to use modulators and now we're not needing them?
I'm just going to, I'm just going to respond to any time I'm called a liar. Don't. That's all.
Is that what you're responding to?
That's what I'm responding to.
Okay.
I didn't dupe anybody. I put a plan together the first year after I got here that said, this is what we're going to have to do. The money spent at the South School would be money that you're throwing away. The school is safe, it has its issues, but the fact is we're going to get through it. I just don't like it when people who never call me, never email me, never communicate with me decide that they're going to disparage my name, and I have a problem with that.
All right, thanks for clarifying that for me.
Perfect. Anyone else? Thank you again for that presentation. It was very thorough and extremely informative. Thank you. I would like to state that I have here in the agenda, the next regular meeting of the school committee is September 23rd, 2025, at 6:00 PM at the Daw Elementary School. It will not be held at the Daw. We are still working out internal kinks at the moment to see if we can rotate the meetings. So for now, the meeting will be held at the district office here in this room. And I will state that again at the end of the meeting. Moving on to financial updates, the warrants, Armando?
Sure, I have a lengthy list here. I'll try to go through it quickly. I just want to see a sampling of.
Thank you.
The bills being paid, the cost, you know, the electricity and all that happens, EFC and so on. But I'll go through this quickly. On June 16, $12,967.47 are student accounts. July 10, $348,904.96 payroll. July 17, $67,556.29 that's related to elevator permitting and so on. And I'll go through this a little bit faster. July 24, $182,397.20. July 24, another one, $433,945.18. July 24, the end, $19,000. July 30, $486.86. July 31, $906,228.900. July 31, $3,600. On August 7, $589,780.92. August 7, $4,000. August 7, $198,442.15. August 11, $3,870. August 14, $282,648. August 21, $5,750. This one was particularly interesting, the scholarships. August 21, $118,127.98. August 21, $11,816.33. August 21, $348,173.28. The next one, I'll just read the updated one because sometimes these warrants are updated. So August 21, $116,496.28. And August 22, $75,000. August 28, $790,422.18. August 28, $2,8300. August 28, $563.1. August 4, $503,57.11.
August or that was September 4?
September, sorry.
It's okay.
I mean, I can always read these, but Chris and I just talked about keeping a list and bringing a list. So I don't know if you prefer to just keep the list and save the time when you read in the marquee, whichever is best for the committee.
Especially if there's as many, just to bring the list.
Yep.
Thank you for that. And thank you for offering that solution for efficiencies. Appreciate that. And thank you again for making yourself available to sign all of these warrants. Really appreciate that. That's not a light undertaking as this list is evidence of.
It takes a great deal of time to draw the bills and something, understand, make a call, or send a text, what does this mean? And get an understanding before you sign it. It's worth doing.
I really appreciate your diligence. Thank you. You represent the school committee well. And just wanted to make sure that we are entering this into the record, these warrants.
Yes.
Okay, perfect. And yes, you read that. Okay, thank you. New business and voting items, the Stoughton Youth Soccer Way. Um, new business and voting items, uh, Stoughton Youth Soccer waiver requests her field use, uh, September through November, and I believe that's, uh, twenty-twenty-five, correct?
Yes, twenty-twenty-five and then the spring of tw- of, uh, twenty-twenty-six. And this comes from, excuse me, this comes from, um, a significant issue that Stoughton Youth Soccer has been having around their fields over on West, um, Street, um, where, um, the, the fields are in difficult condition. As you may recall, that is the Old Town Dump. Um, it was filled, capped, all legally done and so on and so forth, but the drainage there is pretty significant. So what's happening is specifically in their back two, um, areas, once it rains, forget it. It's never gonna, it takes forever to dry. So, uh, for the purposes of safety, um, they really have requested that, um, they utilize, um, the, um, the Stoughton High School field. They recognize that the MIAA and Stone Athletics is the priority. So if there is a change because of weather or other conditions, that they may think that they have practice or a game. And the fact is, they won't have to because the MIAA and our athletic sports prioritizes a third party, both by our standards but also by our policy. Um, so I'm recommending, um, that we continue to work with them. They have the binder and all of that stuff that they, legal stuff that they have to do. We had no major issues last year with them when they used it just for a few games. It makes it a little bit busier, but the fact of the matter is, um, we'll support them as we can.
Got a question on that.
Sure.
Sort of beyond that, but what, I've had a number of people ask, what happened to our soccer field? The high school had a beautiful soccer field and the grass just looks horrible now.
Uh, go ahead, Joe.
One of our, um, pumps is, oh. Thank you. One of our pumps is, is broken and it, it's a pretty expensive cost to fix it. Uh, so the sprinkling system is unable to be utilized at the time. So, uh, our athletic director has actually been talking to Matt Cauchon from the rec department and they're trying to figure out some ways to manage all the fields, um, over the next few months.
Is that field part of the Denison Rec or is that-
No, our soccer field's-
That's ours?
Yes, ours, but then the others as well. So we're trying to work out some kind of arrangement with them where they might-
They all connect? I'm sorry to interrupt, just, are they all connect? I'm just trying to understand why you're talking to the rec department about it.
Uh, because they're-
In a non-aggressive way.
Yes, no.
Wondering.
Of course. Um, because Matt pays for, um, aeration of his fields. Uh, and so they're working out whether or not he can come and aerate our field and what that would look like.
Okay, but that doesn't, so why is the pump, it's a fairly new pump, right?
Um, yeah.
I mean, when the school was, was built. So is it out of warranty or is the-
Warranties on those are one year.
On the, on the pump is one year?
All of those are one year.
And do we have someone that's going to be fixing that pump or has, what's the-
I think we're gonna be looking in the spring to try to put it out there and see if we can-
Okay, so we don't, we haven't done anything towards it yet?
Correct.
Okay. And then what would be the ramifications of having not only our soccer team, but then more soccer team on the field that's already in kind of disrepair?
Yeah, so, um, our athletic director is planning on not using that, that soccer field in the current condition it is in for the soccer season. Will mostly move to other fields like, uh, the practice fields and the other spaces on, on Matt's side of the fields, as well as our turf field, uh, so that that doesn't get any worse than it is. Or if someone gets injured, it's actually not a playable field right now.
Okay, when you say Matt, you're talking-
I'm talking Mr. Cauchon.
Yeah, okay, I just, I want people who are listening to be able to understand. I'm not trying to interrupt you, but just to clarify, when you say Matt Cauchon, that's, so part of our soccer field is our soccer field, meaning the high school's soccer field. But there is another field behind that, in between the high school. I'm just kinda clarifying it for people who are watching.
Thank you.
Between the high school and the Wilkins School. And part of that is the high school and the rec department softball fields. And, and also included in there is the baseball field, but also like an area that's just a grassy area, that there are soccer nets that can be used. And that's what, I guess, the JV or the practicing is being done at? And then the varsity is using our varsity turf field? And then, is it that the JV is using when it's the home games? They're using that rec department area between the Wilkins and high school?
I believe that, uh, Mr. Island will try to get them on the turf as well.
Oh, they haven't played yet?
Yeah.
They haven't had games yet?
Yeah.
Just for clarification, the request from Stoughton Youth Soccer is for games only on the turf field. So they're not looking, not practices. So they're trying to work around how they're gonna do that, but the fact of the matter is, they recognize that they're just trying to get on there for the games, uh, for their schedule in the, in the fall and then in the spring.
And not that I want to say no to them, but is that rec department that we're using, is that not available to them? Or is that something that they can use first and then use our fields because they're in bad shape anyway? So can we put it like in order of priority saying, well, thank, if there's nothing else in this one, but this one's already in rough shape?
Yeah, I don't think they asked to use the grass soccer field. I think they only asked to use the turf.
They're only using the turf and for the sole purposes of their eleven V eleven soccer games.
Okay.
So we're not looking at, at practices. So it's a, it's a, it's a further limitation of the amount that they're gonna use it throughout September to, uh, November and then April, May, June.
Okay, so this actually didn't even pertain, sorry. Got it.
All right, that being said, um, can I have a motion to waive the turf field fee for the Stoughton Youth Soccer? That was made by Jen. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Gillian. At this point, um, any questions or debate on this? Any discussion? All right, hearing none, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Motion carries five-zero. Next, we have a Stoughton Basketball Program waiver request for the gymnasium use, uh, for the twenty-twenty-five, twenty-twenty-six season. Dr. Baeta?
Yes, thank you, madam. Chair through you to the rest of the committee. Uh, since nineteen sixty-four, uh, we've had some type of a relationship with the Storiac as an organization, except as you see from the notation during the pandemic year where we, we were close to them as well. Um, this has been a pretty positive relationship. They are, they are, um, seeking not to pay the use of facility, but they recognize, just like any other organization, they're paying the fees. The fees have gone up, as you know, the hourly rate, so we're not losing any money. We're not making a ton of money as well, but the fact of the matter is, it's an opportunity for our kids in the same way that we're supporting, um, Stoughton Youth Soccer.
Perfect. Any questions, clarifying questions? All right, that being said, can I have a motion to waive the gymnasium fee for the Stoughton Basketball Program?
Some more.
Uh, Armando, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. All right, motion's been moved and seconded. Any questions, debate, discussion? Seeing none, roll call vote.
Aye.
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 Aye. Motion carries five-zero. The next two discussion items, policy IKFE competency determination and policy IHBB middle school pathway exploration will be postponed until the next meeting to give the policy committee further time to review this, um, policies.
So those-
Both policies, both policies.
Those policies shouldn't have been listed as discussion items. They should have been listed as information items. Um, I just wanted to make, and the reason that they're on the agenda quickly is because there are deadlines for both those policies to be adopted. The, um, competency determination policies deadline is October thirty-first and the middle school pathway exploration, which we just received, is actually November first. That's why that item did go on. And it was supposed to be listed as informational because we know there are, there's, there's a tight timeline for these to be adopted. The thing about both these policies is they've been required by the state to be adopted by the committee. And, and Dr. and I both discussed, these are things that actually, in our minds, should have been regulations as opposed to policy requirements. But, uh, but I did want the committee to know that there is a tight timeline on these. So-
Can you tell me again the timeline for each one of these?
So the competency determination's required by October thirty-first and the middle school pathway exploration policy is November first.
Perfect, thank you.
And how many meetings do we have before October thirty-first? We have two?
Three.
Three.
Three, so we have enough to do that one properly.
And again, in, in the future, what I would, um, potentially suggest is even though the subcommittee is working on it, you could still have it as just informational for the entire committee.
And, and just, uh, in terms of what we've done in the past, when we do have a situation like this arise and it is an informational piece where we need to get one, you know, potentially out there to continue with the process, administratively, we have put something on the docket or provided it to the chair of the school committee. Not that that is necessarily the final form that we want, but when there is a timeline issue to get something adopted and generally with a new policy, it can be a three, uh, meeting process. That's why something like that might come on more quickly than a policy that formally goes through the working group where there is, isn't a time consideration.
So when did we know that, let's take IKFE? When did we know that that was coming due, Mr. Ford?
It would've been the end of August.
End of August.
So they gave us the state? You said the state ma- mandated this?
So this is, this is something interesting and we had a discussion about this. What we've seen recently is the state giving us a guidance document, then asking or telling the district that you have to adopt the policy. What we believe is they don't understand necessarily what a policy means to a school district. I, I think there's a misunderstanding at that level that a policy can be something that a superintendent or a principal puts in place and then is effect for the district. When in fact, a policy in the Stoughton Public Schools is a policy of the school committee. And, um, and what we're seeing is things that we believe should be regulations because we really haven't seen anything like this before. If there's a specific set of expectations that the state is gonna require the school district to work within, you take the law, you interpret the law, and you give us a regulation we need to follow. If we believe we need a, a policy to provide further clarification or to add to it in terms of expectation for our faculty and staff, we'd put it in place. This is just unusual in that, and we've got guidance documents on both of these in August with an expectation that both these basically we'd put in place by the end of October or the first of November. It, it just, it just seems unusual to us. Now, we'll follow through, we'll draft a policy, it'll come for information discussion and adoption by the committee. It's just a tight timeline. It's just, it's something we really haven't seen from the Commonwealth in the past. So it's, it's, it's just a little unusual.
Can I add to that comment if I may, Karen? So Karen, think about this. We have a governor's commission on graduation requirements whose graduation or, who, of which its fulfillment is due to the governor December first of twenty-twenty-five. Yet we're talking about graduation policy, competency determination, to be done by October thirty-first. How does that make any sense? Think about that.
Yeah, so what are the repercussions if we don't get it to them in, by October thirty-first and November first? Because it's, you said it's a, it's not a law, it's a policy. So they didn't, so, I mean, are we gonna get like fined as a district? If we did, if we get it in like a month later?
So they've already sent out a potential extension that you could ask for. The, the, the issue here is, what's, what's not being recognized, and I'll give you a perfect example, that the competency determination shouldn't be addressed right now. We just made a change to it. In Stoughton, what we did is we met a deadline they wanted. That deadline was, we said the kids still have to take the MCAS test. They don't have to pass it, but they have to take it and hopefully they take it seriously. That's part one. Everything else we kind of maintained. Since then, they're looking at other things that they want to add. But like I said earlier, the governor's commission is not due until December first of this year. So we're gonna see yet another change, more than likely, in the competency determination. Ideas and I, as things that they're looking at.
So this is gonna come through our policy group again?
Yeah, I'm more than likely. The, the second one is, is the, the pathway one, where they are basically putting on the books the idea based on the new lottery system for acceptance into a vocational school. So they want to make sure that any kid and every kid in every middle school, every eighth grade, has the same access for that receiving vocational school. In our case, the, uh, a wonderful institution, Southeastern Regional.
I love this.
So, so the, the idea, now, the problem is, I, I'm not sure the lottery is the way to go. I mean, the idea that you, you-
A lot of people don't like the lottery.
It, it is a huge mistake in my opinion, but I, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna be an Neanderthal, so. Kids who apply to Southeastern and want to go into a specific program and especially today in the trades, should have that opportunity and it shouldn't be like winning Powerball. But that said, um, they established this, we need to make sure we're doing all these things. I have an affirmation that I have to sign off on every year that we are in fact doing A, B, and C and eighth, with eighth-grade kids, that we're allowing parents and getting parents information and all that stuff. That's really what the policy's gonna state.
It is, and I think my question really was, if we don't get it done by November first, if we don't get it done until December or, you know, if we wait until January because they're gonna redo it, if we wait until January, are they gonna come down here and like, you know, beat us up and be like, you were supposed to have it done?
So probably not, but-
So there's not like a huge rush on this?
But we've never missed a deadline before. It's just, as an organization-
They've never put it out in August before, you said.
Right, but here's, here's the thing. We, I, I would respectfully request we not hurt kids' opportunities for, for us being able to not establish the policy. Because, well, because the-
Which one are you talking about?
About the second one, the second one.
Oh, well, we should be doing it anyway. We shouldn't have, have a policy for that.
So I'm not, I'm, I'm, I don't think we need to extend anything to do with that one, to be quite honest. The competency determination's biggest issue that I have is, we have had no public input into what the competency determination as determined by Stoughton Public Schools should be. No parent, no students, no faculty, nothing. Right? We've just said to the school committee here, you, you have to meet this determination. I, I think that a competency determination process requires that we have some more community input around what are our graduation requirements for Stoughton Public Schools? And again, it's gonna change anyways. That, that's my view of it. So I, I would seek that you, we do our diligence to check off the comp, being compliant for the purposes of meeting the dates because it's all gonna come back to us anyways, especially the first one.
And for the policy working group, who, how much change did you, did you do any change? Mostly on the competency determination. Did you guys make any changes?
No, this is informational only that was provided to us today, so we haven't discussed it.
This is the first time you're seeing it too?
Yeah, because it's informational. It wasn't supposed to be under discussion.
Yeah.
Okay, even on informational, we at least looked at it and discussed the policy. We didn't just say informational as we're looking at it.
The competency determination, we actually looked at briefly in our first meeting. The middle school-
So you did look at it.
So, and, and the thing about that policy, it's, it's a combination of two things. It's a combination of what we already have in our handbooks, which we voted, and the boilerplate components that the state sent us in the guidance document. So that particular policy isn't necessarily something where we can do whatever we want with it. It's pretty much what you see is, is the interpretation of the high school principal on what's in her handbook and what the requirements are in the guidance document.
And who wrote this? Who wrote the policy? Because a lot of the time, I mean, I was on the policy working group. A lot of our policies came through the MASC and then we made some changes to it. Is this different than that?
So MASC, since the time that we should develop this policy, released a policy to this effect. But, but what this policy is, so there's, there's latitude in terms of what can be in your policy and there's also a prescribed component. So when we received the guidance document, I sent it to Ms. Miller and I said, I want you to look at what they're requiring, look what's in your handbook, and what I'd like you to do is send me the way we needed it formatted for Stoughton High School and the Stoughton Public Schools. Because all along, Ms. Miller's been the person that's taken the lead on developing those components and embedding them in a handbook, which she brought to the committee and the committee approved.
Okay, so we're just, right now, I just want to clarify, we're only talking about policy IKFE competency determination. We're not talking about the-
Exactly.
Pathways. Okay, so just, that's, that's great, that's-
So with that, so what you have is you have what's already in our handbook that's been adapted based on the guidance document and what all the required components.
Which was very specific.
Yeah, so it's, I mean, this isn't really a policy, this is really something they're requiring. That's why, Gori, in fact, in fact, this should be a regulation.
But it is gonna be a policy.
Well, it is gonna be a policy.
Because we need to, well, it's not, it's not, we don't have it yet, do we? Do we have IKFE?
We have.
The guidance, the guidance that you're getting-
Was it under a different policy?
So the guidance that you're getting under the word "policy" is not reflective of the role of the school committee policy. They're calling it "policy," right? DESI doesn't tell the school committee what policies are. That's why you have a mass association of school committees. They will read all of the regulations and say, okay, you should have a policy on this and here's an example. That process is literally, now, for this item, it's a cut and paste, basically. That's, it's, they're just taking what DESI said, cut and paste, what's it mean for Stoughton High? That's all it is.
Who's the?
DESI.
DESI. And there's an interesting, Megan, there's an interesting footnote.
So DESI created this? And did you make any changes?
Uh, I made some changes. For example, like I put in our courses where it says English nine, English ten, where it says integrated algebra one geometry. Those are our courses, those are actually courses we run, so those are-
That makes sense, I can see you in here, okay? That makes sense. I can see you in here. Okay, when I was reading through this, I was like, "Wow, this is well-written."
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm like, "Wow, this doesn't sound like what I usually get."
Yeah, so, these are many pieces that, like, when I say pieces, for example, the DESE guidance came back and said, you know, "You have to have an assessment away," like, on that second page, where it says demonstration and mastery.
Yeah.
They actually suggested a final course assessment capstone or equivalent. We could actually do any one of those, because we have the capacity to do any one of those currently. So, I, you know, left that language, that those are the three options that DESI suggested. I kept them in there, because we can do them. But there are places where I added our own pieces and added our own coursework and those things that are specific to Stoughton.
Okay, so, if I'm understanding it correctly, you got it from the state?
We got a guidance from the state.
We got a guidance from the state, not a mandate, not a law, just a guidance, which is part of our policy, of what we do. You made some changes to it. It went to our policy working, or it didn't go to our policy. You never saw this before tonight.
It was brought up, but we haven't discussed it.
Okay, but you have seen it. It did-
Yes.
Was looked at.
And what we said is it goes in as an informational piece in terms of the time that needs to take place. So, that gives us the ability to then have it on the docket, meet the deadline, but there still is the ability to have a rich discussion, and then potentially come back again.
Is that going to be the regular way that this policy working group is going to conduct it? Is that they're-
From what our understanding is, we are going-
Let me just finish what I was saying. Are we going to get policy from wherever source we get it from, and then we're going to give it to the committee as a whole, and then, and call that informational, and then, I'm not, it's a little bit different from how we had done it, is all.
This isn't the normal process.
It isn't.
It's not the normal process, because the committee hasn't been established. You've had one meeting, and we were given this with a very specific-
Only have one meeting?
We're meeting again on Monday.
Sure, sure.
Is Monday this coming Monday?
It's Monday, yeah.
And what's different about it is, this isn't a normal policy. This is something that was thrust upon us. We were given a brief timeline, and there's only a limited number of meetings. Now, and this is on me, is I brought this forward to put on the docket as an information item, so that we have time to come back and meet on Monday and have a further discussion, and we can make the timelines that are put in place by the state. Because technically, it's a three-vote process, although, as for policy, we can vote at the second, if everybody's in agreement. But generally, if you have-
That's correct.
-a brand-new policy that no one's seen before, it's coming on the docket, you always schedule three meetings. To me, that I asked for that to take place. Have we had a chance to talk about it in substance? No, that would be this coming Monday. The second policy, the middle school policy, came up after the meeting, at which point, I looked at the guidance document, I did a bare minimum type of policy that just reflects, in fact, everything in it, we already do.
Okay, so, you wrote this one?
And I did send that, asked it to be put on as an information item, so that we can meet a three-meeting deadline.
Okay, so, Jillian and Jen, you haven't seen this second one, the pathways one, yet?
And they have not, but anticipation of the fact that we're going to meet on Monday, at which point, we can do whatever we want to do with it. But what's, just what's unusual-
So, this is coming through unusually, just because of the timeline?
Well, exactly. And because we weren't given a window or anything else, it's like, you have a drop dead deadline, and when we administratively look back at the number of meetings, we have to accomplish this, and we can easily do it, but it has to get moving. And there still is an opportunity for the working group to go through the whole thing. We can include a completely different recommendation with the next packet. It's just, this is just very unusual by the state. And I did want to throw something in that kind of tells the story about this. There's a caveat with the middle school guidance document, which says, "This does not require a school committee vote unless," and I'm paraphrasing, "unless the school committee votes all policies." Well, that's the whole Commonwealth. So, I think that, I think that kind of shows a disconnect at the Department of Ed right now, in terms of what they need to do in terms of regulation, and what the roles and responsibilities of the committee are. And even the timeline it takes for a committee to function in a standard practice, I mean, our practice, you know, it's tweaked for Stoughton, but more or less, is the standard practice in the entire Commonwealth. So, this is just all highly unusual on their end, which has required us to accelerate the process on our end, and not pursue what we consider a model process to develop and implement a policy. It's just a time constraint pushing things forward.
All right, no, I appreciate you going through all of that and for making all of those clarifications, because it's very important that we know those clarifications. And I just want to say, for the public who's, again, watching this, or who's going to watch this, because that's why we take this, we're doing this because MCAS got voted out. Isn't that the whole reason why we now have to redo, okay, so, this whole thing of having to do a policy that's only three pages, and we have to rush it through, is just because now we don't do MCAS, so now we have to find some other way to have competency determination?
If you recall, except for the wellness policy, most policies should be one-page long or lesser. So, what-
A lot of them aren't.
No, and so, what's happening, and so, my frustration is not with this school committee. My frustration is the process that we're placing school committees in schools into. That doesn't need to go this way. But we had no response to the ballot question. That's the reason we ended up in a ballot question, lost the ballot question, and now, here we are.
All right, then, if I may just make one minor suggestion on behalf of people who don't read policy, people who aren't in the education system, in the education world, like me, I'm not an educator, some of the things that are written in here, and this is where I can see that this was done by an educator, when you have things like, under A, "Students with Disabilities," and it says "FAP," and it says "IDEA," can we just expand those for the public? That would just be my request, that we would just, so that people, because the policies aren't just for the school committee. The policies are for the people that we work for, so that they can read the policies and be able to understand it as well, so that they can follow the policies. So, I would just, that's all that I would ask, and thank you very much for all of that.
So, as the chair of the school committee, I would like to have a brief discussion with my colleagues about the process. It's my understanding and my preference that policies that come before us be put forth by the policy committee, and I understand the tight timeline, but I still feel that I would prefer that Jen or Jillian reach out and say, you know, "We would like to put this policy for this purpose on the next agenda," and for it to come from them. And I see some heads nodding. Is that the preference of the committee?
Yes, that was my assumption, how that would go.
Okay, and Jen as well?
Mm-hmm.
All right, so, just respectfully, you know, hopefully, we won't have an urgent need again, but if you can at least give the policy committee a heads-up, that you're requesting that this go on the agenda, and here's why, and that way, if it warrants a quick conversation, that we can, then you can do that.
We can do whatever you like. I'm just working under the same expectations that we've had. This is slightly different. It's fine. It's, I mean, policy falls under the committee, however you like to do it. That's just fine.
Perfect. And I also would love the policy committee to have the first crack at the policy. So, if the rest of us can restrain from our feedback until they present what they want to present to us, then that way, our comments will be contextual. That allows them to do the work that they have agreed to take on. All right. The next agenda item, the school committee professional development, school committee norms. We are, this was for information only and not for discussion, in part because our facilitator's unable to attend tonight. He will be attending on the 23rd, so we're going to postpone that discussion, but everyone has the summary and the outputs from that, the last meeting that we had, so you have a chance to review it.
I'm going to need that copy back there.
I'll make sure, John, you're attached agenda.
Yeah, it should be on there.
Thank you. All right, moving on to-
Sorry, you said that a facilitator is coming?
Yes.
And who is the facilitator?
What was his name?
Paul.
His name's Paul Zinni, Z-I-N-N-I. He was the gentleman that was hired to work with the committee, which started on July 22nd.
He's with what company?
It's the communications one, Gilfoil. Yeah, John Gilfoil.
Public Relations.
Public Relations.
Gilfoil, Public Relations.
I have the pen, too.
Yeah.
Well, he's got something from it, for sure. It's good. So, Paul Zinni from Gilfoil Public Relations.
I teach, I take pens.
And this was a professional development, and who decided that this was the professional development that we were going to do? Because I don't remember talking about it.
We did discuss it briefly.
I don't remember, like, having a say as to what our professional development was going to be, so I'm just wondering, who made that decision?
I did.
You made the decision. So, the chair made the decision of what the professional development was going to be? And everyone agreed, because I wasn't there, so I'm not sure. And who decided on using Gilfoil Public Relations?
I communicated with Gilfoil based on talking to superintendents that have done things like norms and professional development with school committees.
Okay, and he's a friend of yours, you said, or you know him?
He was a former colleague.
He's a former, he used to be a superintendent.
Correct.
Okay, so, you suggested, Joe suggested, using Paul Zinni from Gilfoil PR for the professional development that the chair decided that we needed. And how much did that cost?
Well, it was originally $1,000. It's now $1,350, because we did not have a quorum at the meeting in August.
All right, yeah, I wasn't able to attend that one in summer. I think a lot of people weren't able to attend that one. I didn't even get a chance to kind of say that I wasn't going to be there. So, $1,350 came out of the budget, which budget, who's line?
School committee.
The school committee's professional development, okay. And how much is that one? I thought it was only $600 on that line.
No, because I think it's more than that, but it's, so, I think we need to have an honest discussion here. Well, let's do that. The committee decided through the chair that norms needed to be accomplished, because the meetings are taking too long. There's all kinds of accusations and things that take place during the meeting, and so, the idea was to bring people together to create a list of at least the things that we can agree to going forward. The chair and I had a discussion about that. I wholeheartedly agreed. We did have it.
Your chair had a discussion about it?
I have discussions with the chair all the time, but we had it at a meeting.
Right, but you two had a discussion about this.
We had it, we had it at a meeting, Karen.
June 17th.
I'm not upset, I'm just telling you.
Your voice is getting higher.
It was a part of the June 17th meeting, we did discuss it as a group.
So, we decided that the committee needed to have working norms around the idea of, "How do we work as a team on behalf of students?" Now, my role as an appointed official is to work on behalf of the committee. Your job is on behalf of the constituents. And so, it seems to me, maybe some of us disagree here, but it seemed to me that we needed to have a working meeting to create what are norms. I have norms with my leadership team. I have norms, I've always had norms, as, for example, things like, you know, be willing to listen, be willing to accept criticism, or whatever your norms are, which there's, at the first meeting in July, which was recorded, it was public, we created a laundry list of norms. Since then, you've received the professional recommendations on those norms, and then you will have the final say on what those norms are, and then those norms become part of the practice of the committee as you work day-to-day with each other, or in a policy subcommittee, or a working group, or so on and so forth. And the rationale behind that was to make our meetings more effective, more efficient, and the ability to have dialogue that gets us to the finish line. And-
So, when was this done in the past?
I've done-
No, for the school committee. When is the school committee, Stoughton School Committee done this?
I don't know.
John, do you know when? You've been here the longest, right? You've done this professional development in the past?
Well, we've had different people do this, different things, usually through MASC.
You're my-
We've had different people come in and do different things, different types of training. And also, with Gilfoil, we've had a relationship with them for probably 15 years. So, it's, I mean, this isn't unusual.
It's not unusual for the school committee?
Yeah, for school committee.
Not, I mean, I understand this, the school might do that, but for a school committee to do-
We did, and it's-
$1,300, $1,350 to do a norms meeting, two days.
In terms of professional development, for two sessions, that's actually very inexpensive.
And if I may, the-
Oh, I'm sure that it is, but it's-
The topic, the topic of the professional development, and I don't want to, I appreciate having an honest conversation, but I don't want to continue to reiterate, you know, the same points. But it was in partial response to public comments that were made through communications to the school committee. It was a request from the public that we find a better way to work together.
How many people from the public requested that?
Well, I read two letters during that June 17th meeting.
Two letters. Have you received any other communications since then?
I have heard things.
You've heard things, all right.
I'm not here to debate the topics. The point was, it was on the agenda, it was communicated, it was discussed in a meeting. Everyone agreed at that time that it would be helpful for us to establish norms. One of the things that we are supposed to do-
What meeting was that from?
June 17th. You have the minutes right in front of you.
June 17th was the, I'm just asking, June 17th was the date that the school committee as a whole decided that that was going to be our professional development?
Is when we discussed it, correct. And when we talked about, and when we talked about planning summer meetings, it was specifically, in part, to achieve that goal.
June 17th, the school committee decided to do those?
Mm-hmm.
Was it by vote, or was it by handshake?
It was by agreement of the school committee.
Was it by vote?
I would have to go back and review the minutes, which you also have in front of you, so the record shows what was done that day.
So, you have it on there, too?
I do, but it's not my job to read the minutes for you.
June 17th, school committee decided, you're not sure whether it was roll call vote or head shake, but to do the professional development. Because I was there, too, I believe at that one.
So, we will continue that conversation at our next meeting.
Maybe we need it.
So, moving on to the approval of the minutes, did anyone have any amendments to the June 17th minutes? A comma is missing. It's only invited to executive sessions, I guess.
I did have one question. On, I think it's page six, and under, halfway down, under D, "MASC Collective Bargaining Bootcamp held at UMass Amherst." That would have been a nice professional development. Who went to that one? You did go to that one. People went to that, yeah, but she's on the bargaining committee for the teachers, that's a hard one. So, I'm glad to hear that you took advantage of that. Thank you.
But that does not need to be added to the minutes. Any other, any amendments to the minutes? Hearing none. I am so pleased to say, for minutes that were so intensive and long, do I have a motion to approve the minutes as written for the June 17th regular school committee meeting? All right, that was made by Armando.
Seconded.
Seconded by Jillian. Motion has been moved and seconded. Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 All right, motion carries, 5-0. All right, moving on to June 24th. Are there any amendments to this, to these minutes? All right, hearing none. I need a motion to approve the minutes for the June 4th regular or special school committee meeting as written. All right, that was accepted by, or made by Armando. And do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen, thank you. Motion has been moved and seconded. Roll call vote?
Aye.
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 Motion's been carried, five zero. And then finally, we have the July 22nd minutes. All right, hearing none once again. Total home run here. I need someone to make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of the July 22nd meeting as written, and that was made by Armando. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Jen. Motion's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Upstair.
Aye.
Okay, and then that was carried, four zero one. And then once again, we have the 26th here. We do not have the minutes, so we will postpone that until the next meeting. All right, that being said, yes?
I have a request for an affirmation of the committee on a timely situation of the last 24 hours. And it goes like this. We have articles due to town meeting for capital by midnight tonight. So my affirmation request is, I did a walkthrough of a couple of our sites in the last week or so, and I have a couple of concerns of safety that need to be addressed. So what are they? They're not complicated, but they need to be addressed. They are, with the new HVAC systems that have been put in place, they are not fenced. I would like to have those fenced for the sake of safety. Soccer balls, kids, you name it, that type of stuff, as well as some gates at some of our schools that are literally falling apart and cars could get through if we don't have a gate there. So I'm just telling you that you'll have it on the 23rd for a formal vote with all the details and specific, but I am filing that because I have a deadline to meet. And it's my fault, I didn't meet the deadline, but I want the committee to hear that from me. And so I'll make sure that you have it probably sometime early next week. We go to, we don't know when we're going to finance committee, but I ask that you give me that flexibility so I can finish up after we did the walkthrough. I just, when they replaced the contract specs, did not include anything to do with fencing or safety. So that's what I plan on doing because it's something that is timely for us and needed. Situation could be snowplowing. I just want to make sure that there's fences around them. So that's one idea.
Be a little bit more specific on what you need and what you're asking.
Yeah, so there are fences and gates that go into, for example, our student play areas. Some of our gates are falling apart.
At what schools?
This would be Gibbons, DAW, and I think those are the two right now off the top of my head, but I'll get to the details. And the idea is when they put up the HVAC systems, they put them on a, like a, they're up high, but they're completely open. And the DAW schools specifically, I noticed this, I noticed it last year, I forgot about it, to be quite honest, that's what happened. And then I wasn't going to ask you to file any meeting, capital items, but I think it's timely that we do that because it's new machinery, there are kids there, and I think we need to make it safe. So that's what I'm filing right away, and then I'm asking you to vote on it on the 23rd.
Okay, so you don't need us to do anything right now? You're just letting us know?
I'm letting you know, and I don't think it's controversial, per se. Heidi had thought that we maybe could use some of the articles that we didn't fully expend the money. For example, the firewall, if we only used 130,000, there's still 160, but we're not sure we can go through that process with the town. So we might have to just take it from capital, but if we can, they will. So it'll be up to the select board to vote if they're moving forward with it once, after the warrants close. But I had to meet the closing of the warrant today.
Okay, so it's for fenced HVAC at the DAW?
Yeah, it's to see if the town will raise an appropriate sum of money for the purposes of enhancing safety and security at Stoughton Public Schools, which may include but is not limited to the installation of fencing, traffic control gates, those are the gates I was just talking about, and those types of safety and security purposes as determined by the superintendent, and to include labor materials and any of the incidental costs. That's the article.
And is there a price tag on that?
It's about 107,000. It's going to come down, though.
$107,000?
Yep.
And it's going to be for two gates, one at the Gibbons and one at the DAW?
I put it as, because I didn't visit all the other sites, I put it as installation of fencing, traffic control gates, or other safety or security purposes, as determined by my office.
Okay, so you're not completely sure--
We're not 100% sure, and--
How much or what's needed?
Yeah, and as you know, I'm very careful about anything to do with safety in the public school committee meeting, but I will get you the details of what exactly we're looking for. I just had to meet the deadline today. It's that simple.